A physical quorum of the members is apparently not present, but we will entertain a motion to permit those members not physically present due to the coronavirus to participate by video teleconference. So with that, I call the meeting of January 12th. To order a physical quorum of members is not present, however pursuant to section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, members are permitted to attend remotely. Either one member of the committee, the chief administrative officer, or our chief legal counsel are physically present at the regular meeting location. In-person attendance and public comments are allowed, subject to attendance limitations required to ensure the health and safety of those who attend. So with that, I'd like to ask, Member Chaplin, would you be kind enough to lead us in the If you please remain standing, I'd like to invite the Reverend Jason Harrell from the Second Baptist Church in Wheaton to lead us in invocation. Reverend Harrell.
Absolutely. Thank you Chairman Cronin. Let us look to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, oh God, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be here, Lord, despite the tumultuous times, despite the unique times and challenges that we face as a community of humanity. We ask God that you would grant us your wisdom. We ask God that you would bless this body of political leaders who assemble on a regular basis, Lord, to do the will of the people. We ask God that you would bless them in their endeavors, that you would look and have mercy upon them and their families, that you would bless the community in DuPage County, that you would continue, oh Lord, to move in ways, Lord, seen and unseen, that you would continue, Lord, to give us the wisdom to deal with the challenges that we face concerning the coronavirus and the many other challenges that we face as a community. We ask, oh God, that you would bless us on this day and that you will forgive us for any and all sin. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, I will entertain a motion to permit the members of the Board attending by telephone to participate and vote in the meeting. So is there a motion? So moved by Member DeCiani, seconded by Member Hart, Member Pachowski has thudded the motion. We have enthusiastic group here today. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
We've got 10 people now.
We've got 10 people now. Yes, we do. Eight plus two is 10. So forgive me. So we'll move right into the roll call. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
Desart?
Here.
DeCiani?
Here.
Eckoff?
Garcia?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Krajewski?
Here.
LaPlante? Okay.
Here.
Ozog?
Here.
Pachowski?
Here.
Rennahan?
Here.
Rutledge?
Here.
Schwartzy?
Here.
Selman?
Here.
Tornatori?
Here.
And Zay?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Trying to get our bearings here a little bit, I welcome the two members that got us into the quorum. So I, we have this meeting that we have called to order, January 12, 2021. A physical quorum of the members is physically present. I will now entertain a motion to permit those members that are not physically present due to the coronavirus to participate by video or teleconference.
Second Chaplain?
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Krajewski?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Rennahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schwartzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Hart? Hart? Okay, great. We have a quorum physically present and we have everybody else participating via Zoom. Thank you for the technologically proficient processes here. And so with that, I have a few, I have a report here on the Order of Chairman's Report. First and foremost, I'd like to call your attention to Dr. Nathania Montez, Samia Sayed, Alviana Crossley, and Michael Childress to kind of tune in via Zoom. Today, we celebrate the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., ahead of the official federal holiday on January 18th. This is, this is a day set aside to not only recall Dr. King's remarkable life and accomplishments, but to reflect on our progress here in DuPage County, as together we strive to achieve our goals of racial equality and fostering a community welcoming to all. As you know, last year, we partnered with the College of DuPage for a year of activities designed to provide education and thoughtful discussion around topics of race. My colleague at COD, Dr. Nathania Montez, Student Representative Samia Sayed, and Alviana Crossley, and NAACP President Michael Childress, join us today to accept our annual proclamation. So please allow me to read through it. Then I'm going to ask Dr. Montez and our COD students to share some information about upcoming events. They have this wonderful effort, the CHAPS United Against Racism Initiative, and I'm also going to ask Michael Childress to share his thoughts as our president here of the NAACP. So with that, the proclamation goes as follows. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to the achievement of civil rights and public service, he believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all, and challenged all citizens to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of America. And whereas during his lifetime, Dr. King encouraged all Americans to serve their neighbors and their communities. And whereas in 1973, Illinois became the first state to make Dr. King's birthday a state holiday, and the residents of Illinois honor Dr. King's legacy each year on the third Monday in January. And whereas in 1994, Congress initiated the King Day of Service, a nationwide effort to transform the federal holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. into a day of community service, grounded in Dr. King's teachings, focused on bringing people together and breaking down the barriers that have divided us as a nation. And whereas hundreds of thousands of volunteers in cities and towns across the nation participate in King Day service projects in all 50 states. And whereas the King Day of Service, which falls on January 18th this year, is a time for the people of Illinois to recognize Dr. King's teachings on advancing equality and opportunity for all by contributing their own time and talents in a day of service. And whereas the King Day of Service provides an excellent opportunity to encourage each citizen to take part in service that will benefit communities and neighborhoods and provide a fitting memorial to the life of Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas in the spirit of the King Day of Service, DuPage County and the College of DuPage partnered last year on CHAPS Unite Against Racism, an initiative to unite the community against racism and provide a platform for meaningful conversations to help audiences reflect, share, and act. And whereas this collaboration with the College of DuPage and ongoing partnerships with organizations, including the DuPage NAACP, will be incredibly valuable, allowing our entire community to explore what diversity and inclusion really means in each of our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board and members of the Board, do hereby declare January 18th, 2021, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and urge residents to honor the memory of Dr. King, to put his teachings into action, and to find ways to give back to their community. I will entertain a motion. So moved, Member Chaplin, seconded by Member DeCiani. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay, the ayes have it, enacted this 12th day of January 2021. And with that, I would like to ask Dr. Montez, are you online here for us, please?
I am. Good morning, and thank you for inviting us here today. It is a tremendous honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of College of DuPage and our community of more than 21,000 students and nearly 3,000 employees. Joined by Wendy Parks, Vice President of Marketing and Communications, Amy Calhoun, Internal Communications Manager, and our phenomenal student leaders, Samia Sayed and Alviana Crossley, we are delighted to share this in this outstanding distinction. Today's recognition is ultimately a tribute to the college's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and taking a stand against racism. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Our lives begin to end on the day we become silent about the things that matter." And it is through that lens in which we partnered with Chairman Dan Cronin to launch the CHAPS Unite Against Racism Initiative last fall. Samia and Alviana, along with our very own Board Chair Frank Napolitano, and Chairman Cronin, participated in the launch video that has now been watched by literally thousands of viewers. Our initiative's goal was simple, to educate, reflect, and ignite critical and authentic conversations around diversity throughout DuPage County. We hope that you will continue to forge ahead with this, along this journey with us. Next month, we have several opportunities for you to get involved during Black History Month, from forums with special guest speakers, to videos, and much more. And starting in March, we will launch the E4 Series with DuPage County. Equity in Economics, Education, and Enforcement of the Law, featuring experts from both COD and the county. We look forward to an enriching experience with CHAPS Unite Against Racism. In closing, I would like to sincerely thank our Board of Trustees, President Dr. Brian Caputo, our faculty, staff, and students, as well as the DuPage County Board for supporting this important endeavor. And now, without further ado, I will turn it over to our Board of Trustees, Student Trustees, Samia Sayed. Samia?
Thank you, Dr. Montez. Good morning. It's an honor to be here with you all, Board members, community members, and most of all, families and friends. It is a great honor to be with you on this day, a day we come together, we unite and collectively recognize and renew our continued commitment to values rooted in the utmost regard for humanity above all. We, as a community, have pledged to stand against racism. Through study, reflection, and action, we are making our world a more positive and equal place for all. CHAPS Unite Against Racism has enabled our community to listen and believe in the stories of each other and engage in ongoing action to combat racism. Together, we will continue making the conscious decision to utilize our collective voices to ignite change within our community and positively impact this world. Today is a day for all of us, for our community to continue being courageous and standing together as one regardless of ethnicity, religion, backgrounds, and beliefs to bring change. Human beings are like mines of gold and silver. We have so much of value within us. Our diversity of thought, strengths, backgrounds, and perspectives help us empower each other and make a positive impact in this world. We unite our multiple perspectives, cultures, and backgrounds to together value and protect life above all else as a people and community of unity where everyone has a voice. With intentionality, we are educating, reflecting, and taking action to strengthen and empower our community. Our conviction to do so makes us more resolute in our belief in high moral values and ideals. CHAPS Unite Against Racism called and resonated with our entire community to listen, discuss, and share on issues of racism, injustice, activism, protest, inclusivity in the wake of recent events. This initiative has truly served and will continue to serve as not just a moment, but a movement. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Montez, and thank you, Representative Samia. Really appreciate that. Michael Childress, are you available to offer some thoughts here, please?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank the County Board and the leadership of the County Board for your continued partnership. It has been really a fruitful relationship, and I'm really excited to continue the work that you've started and continue to do on diversity and inclusion. I mean, it is an honor to accept the proclamation on behalf of the NAACP. Again, I look forward to all of the continuing work that the County Board has done and is continuing to do, and some of the plans that are upcoming that many of the Board members and I have discussed. One of the nice things that I like to, I feel really good about is because many of the County Board members are also members of the NAACP. And we look forward to continuing to fight for civil rights and ending racism throughout all of DuPage County. Again, on behalf of the NAACP, we want to thank the entire leadership board of the County, DuPage County, and thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for participating. That's awesome. So I move on to the Order of Chairman's Report. I'm going to offer some remarks, if I may please. You know, there is perhaps no more fitting time to frame the events of the past few days and weeks than today, as we consider the life and contributions of Martin Luther King Jr. On Wednesday, we were all horrified by the actions of a mob who descended on our nation's Capitol, defiling that building, a physical symbol of our democracy. Far worse, five lives were lost as a result of the melee. That afternoon, I issued a statement decrying and denouncing these actions. It is clear, it is abundantly clear, President Trump is responsible for inciting the actions of those who desecrated our Capitol with the intention of causing harm and damage. I share the outrage expressed by fellow Republicans, fellow Democrats, frankly, all law-abiding citizens, at the careless, craven attempt to overturn our election. The President, his actions have hurt America and the American ideal. We, we all will have to work harder to rededicate ourselves more fully to bipartisanship, compromise, civility, and collaboration, so that our citizens' faith may be restored in the rule of law, our democratic ideals, and institutions. We can be and we are and have been the example here in DuPage County. But make no mistake about it, I am here to condemn the actions that we saw that were initiated by the President. I'm shocked and horrified, and I feel a sense of loss for our country and our American ideal. And I think it is incumbent upon all of us in this room to get past all of that and to show the rest of the world that we are an example of good government, that we can and have been working well together, and will continue to work well together on behalf of the citizens and the people of DuPage County. Because we will restore the faith, at least right here in our own backyard, we're going to do it. So, so I join all of you today as we reflect on this damage to our republic and ongoing events, and take a, take a long view, try to remember Dr. King. How would Dr. King look at today's, these events of today? He did say, "A riot is the language of the unheard." As I consider that, I conclude that no amount of anger or frustration is reason for endangering lives or destroying property, not now, not ever. But as we resolve to move forward as a county, as a county board, as a nation, one democracy, perhaps we are well advised to remember Dr. King's words and dedicate ourselves to a path of nonviolence, thoughtful listening, mutual respect. This approach will move our county and our nation to a kinder, gentler, better place. So those are my thoughts. I think they probably reflect the thoughts of many of us here today. That concludes the Chairman's Report. We move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. I don't see, do we have any public comment here in person? Okay. Mr. McCarthy, do you have public comment via electronic communications? Okay. Would you please proceed?
First public comments from Lori McDonald. It's regarding Dominion voting machines. It says, "DuPage County has Dominion voting machines. I spoke with Dave Lindstrom. He insists our machines are not connected to the Internet, but I have watched all the testimony, and that's not true. And he insists our machines were secure. All the evidence shows these machines are not secure. Perhaps DuPage has changed from a Republican county to a Democrat county due to our corrupt voting machines, who got the China bribes in Illinois to put these machines in. I am publicly calling for DuPage County to remove these machines." Next comments from Maria Greco. It's regarding the Health Department must change their return to school framework now. Elmhurst District 205 and the Elmhurst Teachers Council have taken a hard line against returning to school. Their rationale is anti-student and not focused on their well-being. Our students are suffering, and not just academically, but physically, mentally, and emotionally. Safeguarding health and well-being is about more than safeguards against COVID. One of their arguments is that they are following the DuPage County Health Department guidance. It says schools should be remote in times of high COVID transmission. This is wrong. Doctors, experts, the World Health Organization, and others say kids should be in school. Please advocate for your county's school districts who feel it's impossible to go against this DuPage County Health Department guidance. You've passed the buck and said that the power rests with each individual school district, but as our district says, we don't make it a habit to go against the advice of the Health Department. Please use your leadership capabilities and have the Health Department change their return to school framework. In-person learning should be prioritized, and in times of high transmission should be mitigated with masks, distance as much as possible. Healthy hygiene, cleaning, disinfecting, screening for symptoms, and contact tracing, the health and safety of an entire generation is on your shoulders. Hypocrisy said first do no harm. Keeping schools closed is doing more harm than good. Suicide rates are up. Depression rates are through the roof. More kids are getting put on anxiety medicine. This has to stop. Put the kids of our county first. We implore you to get this guidance changed and do what's best for our kids before we have a tragedy close to home. Thank you." Next comments from Wayne Ennerson. It's regarding pay for the Board. Says, "I cannot understand why the Board members receive so much money for a part-time job, other than it's taxpayers' money." That concludes this comment. Next comments from Amanda Wittenborn. It's "Grant Thank You" is the subject. It says, "Dear Chairman Cronin and the DuPage County Board, on behalf of the Downers Grove Choral Society Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you for granting $300,000 in Cares Funds to the DuPage Foundation. The Downers Grove Choral Society is a grateful recipient of $10,178 of these funds. They allow us to continue providing the DuPage community with exquisite music as we have since 1959. Never have we faced a situation which forced us to cancel four concerts spanning two seasons or outreach performances at the Clarendon Hills Memorial Day Observance, the Downers Grove Christmas Tree Lighting, nursing homes in Downers Grove, and the Downers Grove Library. We would have had great difficulty maintaining the course without your generous assistance. Due to the most recent lockdown, we now rehearse entirely virtually. We created a short music video we would like to share with you. It features "Vivaldi's Gloria," a piece we had planned to perform during our Fall 2020 concert. We hope you enjoy it. There's a link to a YouTube video, which I'll make sure is sent to all of you. Sincerely, Amanda Wittenborn, President, Downers Grove Choral Society Board Members." Music has always been an important part of my life. Not only do I participate in local community chorus, my children do too. With the sudden loss of music due to COVID, many of these organizations are facing grim circumstances. I very much appreciate the efforts made to secure extra grant money to help not only Downers Grove Choral Society, but also young neighborhood singers, so that these organizations can make it through the financial crisis that has been caused due to the pandemic. Music is an extremely important part of mine and my family's lives, and we appreciate the efforts that have been made to help get critical funds to these two groups in particular. Thank you so very much for your work, Amanda Wittenborn." Also, from Betty Bessie Kuske, K-U-S-K-E, I wish to express my grateful thanks for your grant of $10,000, $10,178 to the Downers Grove Choral Society. This music group is so special to me. I have missed singing our concerts and outreach performances. This grant will help us to keep going and to keep giving great music to our community. That concludes those comments. Next comments from Lisa Chu. It's regarding remote learning recommendations. It says, "Please remove the remote learning recommendation from your guidelines because that is outdated and no longer recommended by the CDC. Our school has layered mitigations that have been proven by study after study to work to make schools safe." That concludes the comment. Next comments from Rebecca Harpster. It's regarding, "Please advocate for the children of DuPage County." It states, "My name is Becca Harpster. I'm the mom of two kids in Elmhurst D205. You heard my comment at the December 22 meeting of the DuPage County Board, along with many others from my district. The response to our public comments was concerning. We are all citizens and voters in DuPage County who deserve to be heard, and our school district has done everything the same as Timothy Christian Visitation and Immaculate Conception. The biggest difference is that our teachers' union is using the DuPage County Health Department's return to school framework as a way to say that schools aren't safe. My concern is that the DuPage County Health Department is not using the most recent CDC guidance in their framework. Our comments were called misguided, even though they were promoting a return to school guidance on the CDC website. I think the DuPage County Health Department is misguided because their framework hasn't been updated since August and no, no longer represents the best thinking from the CDC. I've sent Chairman Cronin an email with a link to the DuPage County Health Department return to school framework that shows exactly where they encourage 100% remote learning in times of substantial transmission. I've also sent Chairman Cronin a link to the current CDC guidance. It says, "When all five mitigations are implemented correctly, school is a low risk." This is exactly what my comment is suggesting for the DuPage County Health Department. Further, this is what the Chicago Public Health Department is now saying, that layered mitigations work when implemented, the communities that utilize them have lower instances of COVID-19 than the community at large. All we are asking is for the DuPage County Health Department to review the most current guidance and make sure their return to school framework is truly the best for the health of children and families in DuPage County. As elected officials of the DuPage County Board, you have the ability to inquire with Ms. Ayala and to ask for a review of the guidelines. To the rest of the members who said that this is not in your purview, that science is finite, and that this is not political, I disagree. History will be on the side of those who use their political power for good and use their political influence to help the children of DuPage County. Have you seen how the Chicago Public School, sorry, the Chicago Public Health Department is working with Chicago Public Schools and promoting safe school with layered mitigation strategies? Why isn't the DuPage County Health Department reaching out to work directly with the public school districts in its county to help them support safe school environments with layered mitigations? We need your leadership. All we are asking in the absence of a Board of Health meeting in January is that you encourage the DuPage County Health Department to review and update if necessary their guidance. You asked the DuPage County Health Department to work directly with local public schools. Timing is critical. A Lake County High School senior took his life this week. He could have been a high school senior for many of our communities. He could have been one of our children. We need action now to protect the children of DuPage County." Next comments from Elizabeth Thompson's regarding reopen schools. It states, "I am submitting this comment in regards to the metrics that the DuPage County Health Department still has on their websites in regards to schools reopening. The Health Department has started, has stated that it's up to each individual superintendent. However, the superintendents feel they are following the metrics set forth by the DuPage County Health Department. I'm requesting the Board to recommend the Health Department to update the metrics for in-person learning to align with the current guidelines set forth by the CDC. Specifically, the DuPage County Health Department needs to remove the recommendation for remote learning in times of substantial community spread. Even during times of substantial community spread, there has not been documented outbreaks within schools. Schools are essential. Our county has, needs to supplement our, needs to support our public schools. Our Health Department needs to update their guidelines and recommendations for in-person learning. Our kids are in a crisis, both academically and emotionally. There are accounts of increasing depression, anxiety, and suicides. These cannot be ignored. Schools are safe, and our kids need someone to start standing up for them and making the right decisions." Next comments from Mia Allen. It's regarding, no subject. It says, "My name is Mia Allen. I have three children in District 205 in Elmhurst. You may have heard many comments from the last Board of Education meeting last week. The response to our public comments was concerning. We are all citizens and voters in DuPage County who deserve to be heard, and our school district has done the same as Timothy Christian Visitation and Immaculate Conception. The biggest difference is that our teachers' union is using the DuPage County Health Department's return to school framework as a way to say that schools aren't safe. My concern and the reason I and my fellow community members are submitting public comments is that the DuPage County Health Department is not using the most recent CDC guidance for their framework. Our comments were called misguided, even though they were promoting their return to school guidance on their CDC website. I think that the DuPage County Health Department is misguided because their framework hasn't been updated since August. That no longer represents the best thinking from the CDC. The CDC guideline, guidance suggests that when all five mitigations are implemented correctly, school is very low risk. This is exactly what our public comment is suggesting for the DuPage County Health Department. Further, this is what the Chicago Public Health Department is now saying, that layered mitigations work. And when implemented, the communities that utilize them have lower instances of COVID-19 than the community at large. All we are asking is for the DuPage County Health Department to review the most current guidance and make sure their return to school framework is truly the best for the health of children and families in DuPage County. As elected officials of the DuPage County Board, you have the ability to inquire with All we are asking is that for the DuPage County Health Department to review the most current guidance and make sure their return to school framework is truly the best for the health of the children and families in DuPage County. As members of the DuPage County Board, you have the ability to inquire with Ms. Ella and ask for a review of the guidelines. To the members who said that this is not in your purview, that science is finite, and that this is not political, I disagree. History will be on the side of those who use their political power for good, who use their political influence to help the children of DuPage County. Have you seen the Chicago Public Health Department is working with Chicago Public Schools in promoting safe school layered mitigation strategies? Why isn't the DuPage County Health Department reaching out to work directly with the public school districts in its county to help keep them, to help support safe schools, environments with layered mitigations? We need your leadership now. We are all asking in the absence of a Board of Health meeting in January is that you encourage the DuPage County Health Department to review and update if necessary their guidance. The U.S. DuPage County Health Department to work directly with the local public schools. Timing is critical. A Lake County High School senior took his life this week. This could have been a high school senior for many of our communities. He could have been one of our children. We need action now to protect the children of DuPage County." Next comment is from Greg Lind. It's regarding open schools. Says, "Schools have been essentially closed in Elmhurst since March. The teachers' union strictly used stats provided by the county. There must be a more accurate way of reporting the stats. I think the county should put a disclaimer reminding districts that choice is up to them, not the county. As of now, COVID is not our only issue, but the mental health of our children. We are seeing more teen suicides. You cannot just look at COVID and ignore mental health. We also need to have a plan in place in the event teachers refuse to return to the classroom. You cannot expect citizens to keep paying for something that does not exist. Remote learning is not what we are paying for. We have a responsibility to the residents of the county who also pay you salaries. It's time to stop living in fear and open the economy." Next comment is from Thomas Garitano, G-A-R-I-T-A-N-O. It's regarding resolution denouncing insurrection of 1/6/21. I request that the county board members considering adopting a resolution that unequivocally affirms the 2020 presidential election outcome in addition to denouncing the violent attack on Congress and the lies of election fraud that prompted it in light of the ongoing threat to sacred American principles of self-rule. The Board should also considering, should also consider explicitly denouncing Donald J. Trump, whose months of incitement led to the loss of life, including a Capitol Police officer's in the January 6 attempt to prevent Congress and his own vice president from performing their constitutional duties. The resolution, in my opinion, should urge that our elected officials in Congress similarly commit to upholding the election's solidity and opposing any future attempts by Trump or other seditionists like Senator Hawley or Senator Cruz to seek the office of President of the United States. DuPage County must be a place where such profoundly unpatriotic acts are met with resolve by public officials and private citizens without regard to party affiliation. Respectfully, Thomas J. Garitano, Downers Grove, Illinois." There's a subsequent follow-up, there's a second one of these that it looks to be a verbatim resubmission at the same time. So he submitted it twice. I won't read it again. The next comments from Ty Covey. It's regarding 2020 election and January 6/21 attack. It says, "I join in the request that the Board members consider a resolution accepting Joe Biden as the winner of the 2020 presidential election and condemning Donald Trump's unfounded attacks on the election and incitement of an attack on the U.S. Capitol Building on January 6, 2021." That concludes that comment. Next comments from Annie Sedore, S-E-D-O-R-E. It's regarding vaccination schedule. It says, "Good morning. I'm writing to ask if you prioritize teachers and other educational staff in the distribution of the COVID vaccine. It is vital that our kids get back to school, and this will help provide a safe environment for all. Please also have therapists and therapeutic businesses prioritized as well. Our children have paid a steep price, and we need to do anything to get them back to normalcy." Next comments from Jean Hogan. It's regarding update return to school framework. It says, "We are all citizens and voters in DuPage County who deserve to be heard, and our school district has done the same as Timothy Christian Visitation and Immaculate Conception. The biggest difference is that our teachers' union is using the DuPage County Health Department's return to school framework as a way to say that schools aren't safe. My concern and the reason I and all my fellow community members submitted public comments is that the DuPage County Health Department is not using the most recent CDC guidance for their framework. Our comments were called misguided even though they were promoting the return to school guidance on the CDC website. I think the DuPage County Health Department is misguided because their framework hasn't been updated since August and no longer represents the best thinking from the CDC. The CDC guidance suggests that when all five mitigations are implemented correctly, school is low risk. This is exactly what our comment is suggesting for the DuPage County Health Department. Further, this is what the Chicago Public Health Department is now saying, that layered mitigations work and when implemented, the communities that utilize them have lower instances of COVID-19 than the community at large. All we are asking for is the DuPage County Health Department to review the most current guidance and make sure that the return to school framework is truly the best for the health of children and families in DuPage County." Next comments from Carrie Martin. It's regarding opening the school, school opening framework. It's, "I'm the parent of three children, I'm the parent of three children in District 205, which has been closed to in-person learning for most of the school year. While I understand the decision around in-person learning is up to the district, I also know that our district is using the return to school framework from the Department of Health. This framework has not been updated since the summer. At this time, we know much more about COVID-19 and the impact of layered mitigation strategies that limiting the transmission of COVID at school. I'm asking that you encourage the Department of Health to revisit the framework and align with the most recent CDC guidance, as well as recent research studies conducted this fall. Please help ensure our DuPage schools are getting the best input as possible from the Health Department. They're using this in decision-making." That concludes that comment. Next comments from Jennifer Somer Wittruck, W-I-T-R-U-K. It's regarding return to school. It says, "Please update your return to school framework to be in line with the new CDC guidelines, which state layered mitigation strategies make school low risk. Our kids are suffering unnecessarily and need to get back into the classroom." That concludes that comment. Next comments from Amy Nelson. It's regarding student well-being. It says, "Please update your return to school verbiage to match the current guidance from the CDC and hundreds of renowned medical professionals would state that with proper precautions, namely masking and distancing, returning to campus is safe and recommended. It seems our district officials and local teachers' unions are relying on your current recommendations for remote learning, and unfortunately, the mental health and general wellness of our students are being significantly impacted as a result." The next comments from Jill Jarvis. It's regarding board meeting, public comment. Says, "Good evening. I'm writing to ask that the DuPage County Board use their powers, that be to encourage the DuPage County Health Department to review their return to school metrics and update them to be in alignment with the current scientific data and CDC recommendations. It is becoming evident that these metrics have not been reevaluated since August. August, again, repeated for emphasis. Since then, there has been an exceptional amount of data that proves layered mitigations within schools work when implemented correctly. As the data continues to evolve, I'm frankly surprised that an institution such as the DuPage County Health Department is not evolving as well as well within the DuPage County Board's power to inquire about these outdated guidelines that are influencing decisions being made right now within our school districts. Thank you." Rick Eertmoed, E-E-R-T-M-O-E-D. It's regarding COVID planning. It states, "My comment is short and direct. Please do what you can to prioritize vaccination for the elderly, especially those in long-term care facilities, since that is where most of the dying is happening from COVID. Also, please prioritize our educators so our schools can fully reopen and our children can regain some sense of normality once again." Next comments from Laura Youngren, Y-O-U-N-G-R-E-N. It's regarding this return to school frameworks. It says, "Good morning. I'm writing in hopes to encourage the DuPage County Health Department to review their guidelines regarding the recommendations for schools in the DuPage County Health Department's return to school framework. Current information from the CDC shows that the layering, multiple protections allows students, teachers, and staff to remain safe, and the maximum restriction recommendations are resulting in school boards limiting the amount of time our children are allowed in school. While I realize the DuPage County Health Department only provides recommendations regarding school policy, each school board makes her own decision adjustments in the DuPage County Health Department's return to school framework that follow current CDC findings and recommendations will allow school boards to feel more supported in increasing the amount of time children are in school, while COVID-19 is very real and very serious. Those mental health needs that our students are experiencing, suicide, depression, and isolation are very much more a risk for these young children than COVID-19 is, and DuPage County Health Department must consider mental health along with physical health. Thank you for the work that you do." That concludes the comment. Next comments from Meredith Vogel. "I beg that this Board think about the children in DuPage County and the harm not being in school is causing. Can you please tell the DuPage County Health Department to review school guidelines for a safe return to school? School boards are relying on DuPage to instruct their decision-making. My children have been out of school for most of the year and are struggling mentally and socially and have IEPs. They need to be in school. Please help us. We need to follow the CDC guidelines. Why are the guidelines of the DuPage County Health Department more stringent? Why haven't they been updated? Children are committing suicide due to this pandemic. They feel isolated. They feel alone. They are not learning. Please help them get back into our buildings to repair the mental and educational damages it's caused. This is all of our responsibility as a DuPage County community. Do something now. Please help advocate for our kids." Next comments from Sherry Romano. It's regarding reopen District 205. "As a mother of two teenage girls, I'm begging you to use science and the latest data to safely open the schools. As parents, we feel unheard and ignored. As to students, these children feel hopeless. The science provides proof that we can safely return to school. Please use the most current data recommendations from scientists and local metrics to make the best decision for everyone. Look at how other schools have opened safely. These children are suffering emotionally and academically. We can do this and stay safe at the same time. Thank you." Next comments from Laura Miller. It's regarding COVID return to school framework. "Please update your return to school framework to align with the current recommendations by the CDC and World Health Organization. I understand you are leaving up to the school districts to decide if they should return to in-person instruction, but you published a framework that does not align with the current research that the districts are following. That framework is your responsibility, and you should update it." Next comments, and the last comment is from Jennifer Campasano, C-O-M-P-O-S-O-N-O. It's regarding COVID. It says, "My child went to school today for the first time since October and said he learned more than an hour of math than he has in the past two months on Zoom. Can you please think about this logically and push for a return to normalcy for our children who are not getting sick? I have high schoolers, and I am honestly worried about their mental state. These kids are working jobs, are playing sports in other states. Somebody needs to start standing up for them." That concludes that public comment, and that's all the public comment I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. Is there a motion? Member Chaplin moves, seconded by Member DeCiani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of County Board, Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Chairman. I would seek a resolution on, or a motion on CBR 66-21, appointment of Greg Schworzy as a member and chairman of ETSB.
There's a motion and a second, seconded by Member Chaplin. Any discussion? We're all in favor. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Eckoff.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would seek a resolution on CBR 65-21, appointment of Julie Renahan as a member of ETSB.
Second Schworzy. Got a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Which of those multiple motions did you recognize?
I think it was Member Tornatori that moved first, seconded by Member Schworzy.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would seek a resolution on CBR 64-21, appointment of Eric Kramer as a member of the ETSB.
So moved by Member Schworzy, seconded by Member Renahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Schworzy. Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And finally, I'd seek a resolution on CBR 63-21, a resolution appointing David Scharr as a member of police of the ETSB.
So move Schwartzy.
Second, Renahan.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Selman. A fine report. On to the order of Finance, Member Liz Chaplin.
I will, uh, move to combine, uh, items A, B, and C under Finance. These are all acceptance and appropriations. Uh, item FIR 005521, acceptance and appropriation of additional funding for the extension of time for
Let's take, um, let's entertain the motion to combine these three items.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, no worries. So, Member Chaplin has moved, uh, Member Seconded to combine items A, B, and C. Uh, we can take a voice vote because we have a majority of a quorum here in the room. Just wanted to offer that for informational purposes. So, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose nay, the ayes.
Chairman, Don left.
We lost Pachowski.
Oh, for Pete's sake. For God's sake. All right. But he was here, he's on the roll call. So, all right, sorry. So, we have a motion and a second to combine these three items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
I didn't hear my name, but Desart, aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on FIR 005521, acceptance and appropriation of additional funding for the extension of time for Nycor Gas Energy, Saber Kits, uh, Project Grant Company, uh, $5,000, uh, for community services, $3,000. Uh, FIR 005621, resolution, acceptance and appropriation of the income eligible retrofit program fiscal year '21, uh, community services, $286,200. And, uh, finally move on FIR 005721, acceptance and appropriation of additional funding and extension for, uh, time of the Emergency Solutions Grant, uh, COVID response, uh, from $1,031,548 to $3,550,152, an increase of $2,483,604.
Okay, thank you, Member Chaplin, for those explanations of those three items. Mr. Clerk, uh, is there a motion to pass all three of these?
So moved.
So moved by Member Tornatori, seconded by Member Chaplin. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Uh, I move to combine items D and E on Finance, uh, payment reimbursement of Health Department.
Motion to combine items D and E. So moved by Member Chaplin, seconded by Member Renahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. The items are combined. Please proceed, Member Chaplin.
Yes, move to approve FIR 006021, resolution, recommendation for the approval of a payment to the DuPage County Health Department for the reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses from the CRF Fund for a total amount of $78,466.89. And move on FIR 006821, recommendation for the approval of a payment to the DuPage County Health Department for the reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses from the CRF Fund for a total amount of $43,831.50.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. There's a motion by, uh, Member Chaplin to, uh, uh, pass these resolutions, seconded by Member Renahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move, uh, move on item FIR 00721, resolution, recommendation for the approval of a contract extension and a payment to the Village of Bloomingdale for the supplemental reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses from the CRF Fund for a total amount of $61,855.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman, I, uh, move to approve item GFIR 007221, resolution, recommendation for the approval of a contract extension to the Village of Addison for the completion of COVID-related projects using CRF funds.
Got a motion and a second by Member DeCiani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to combine, uh, combine items H and I. These are, uh, intergovernmental, um, agreement extensions.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Member Rutledge to combine H and I. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Uh, I move to approve FIR 007421, resolution, recommendation for the approval of an extension to the intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the DuPage County Health Department for reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses. And I move on FIR 0071-21, resolution amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and various townships for a contract extension for the reimbursement of eligible COVID-19 expenses.
Second, Desart.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to combine items J, K, L, M, and N. These are all extension of agreements.
Got a motion to combine items J through N. So moved by Member Chaplin, seconded by Member Renahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The items are combined. Member Chaplin, please proceed.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 007321, resolution approving an extension to the grant agreement with Hands of Hope Food Pantry. Move approval of FIR 007521, resolution approving an extension to the grant agreement with Itasca Food Pantry. Move approval of FIR 007721, approval of an extension to the agreement with the DuPage Health Coalition to administer the DuPage County Influenza Vaccination Program. Move to approve FIR 007621, resolution approval of an extension to the grant agreement with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. Move approval of FIR 007921, resolution approval of an extension to the agreements between the County of DuPage and various nonprofits to administer, administer the housing assistance program.
Okay, there's been a good explanation and a motion by Member Chaplin, seconded by Member Renahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolutions are adopted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 006921, uh, resolution placing names on payroll. However, I will be amending this, um, motion. The Sheriff's Equity Adjustments and Other Items from the Sheriff will be, um, informational only and the rest of the, um, items will be, uh, that we're going to be approving. The reason behind this is, um, no other elected officials have to bring these forward and this is well within the Sheriff's budget. So, we really don't have to be voting on it. So, we're just going to do it for informational purposes.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. So, you're making a motion, you're asking leave of the body to separate the question, I think, or to revise the question. Uh, how would you frame this, Mr. State's Attorney? Okay, sure, simple. So, yeah, so you're making a motion to approve as amended.
Amended in finance.
Yes, and seconded by and DeCiani, a tie. Uh, it's up to you, Mr. Clerk. Um, so, yeah, so we have a motion and a second on this item, uh, entitled placing names on payroll with the understanding that, uh, Member Chaplin offered. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge, Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay. Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. Um, I move approval of, um, change order, uh, Strino, Romello, and Durkin contracted extension to May 1st, 2021, to provide professional assistance in collective bargaining matters, no change to contract total.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of amendment FIR 035520A, amendment to resolution FIR 035520, authorization of memorandum of understanding with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal employees.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Member Chaplin. A fine report. Thanks so much. Uh, on to the order of development. Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, under Chairman's Mark, I'd like to welcome the two new members of our committee, uh, Brian Kuduski and, uh, Member Paula Garcia, my new Vice Chair, and thank, uh, Member Chaplin and Member Hart for their service in the past. I would, um, have liked to combine some of these items under development. However, as we learned in law school, every piece of real estate is unique, so every, uh, zoning, uh, issue with those needs to be taken separately, but I will move these along as quickly as possible. Uh, I move approval of DCO 0002-21, ordnance C 2046, 28 West 510 Washington Avenue Investments. This is a conditional use approval, uh, by the ZBA to change the use of a group home from group quarters to increase from eight to 12 people.
But a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 0004-21, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to reduce a corner yard setback from 30 feet to approximately 12 feet for a new detached garage.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 0005-21, ordnance C 2081, zoning hearing officer's recommendation and a, uh, Development Committee unanimous approval to allow a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain in place less than 30 feet from the corner yard property line.
Second, Schworzy. Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 0007-21, ordnance C 2085, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation and unanimous Development Committee approval to approve a conditional use to allow an existing deck to remain less than three feet from the interior side property line.
Motion and a second by Member Diciani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 0008-21, ordnance C 2086, uh, way, way back, zoning hearing officer's recommendation and unanimous approval by the Development Committee to approve a conditional use to increase the total size of attached accessory buildings from permitted 650 square feet to approximately 1,021 square feet.
And a motion and a second by Member Diciani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 0009-21, ordnance C 2087, William A. Brower Trust, also zoning hearing officer's recommendation and unanimous approval by the Development Committee to approve a conditional use to permit cast accessory buildings having an exceeding, an area exceeding the maximum accessory area permitted in the R1 district.
And a motion and a second by Member Diciani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And lastly, I move to approve DCO 0010-21, ordnance C 2089 Perez. Uh, this is to, uh, to, uh, condition, approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the interior side property and a conditional use to allow an existing deck to remain less than three feet from the interior side property line.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second by Member Diciani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. A fine report. On to the order of environmental. Member Sheila Rutledge.
I too will stay seated, if that's all right, Chairman.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year to everybody here and, uh, those joining us on Zoom. I move to approve, uh, item 20-21-43, appropriation of funding for the continued operation of the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Facility in the amount of $100,000.
Second, Desart.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski and Renahan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Rutledge. Uh, on to the order of Health and Human Services. Member Julie Renahan.
Let me start over, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just by way of, uh, informational, um, DuPage Care Center employees and residents will begin receiving their vaccines Friday and Saturday, so I'd like to thank Janelle Chadwick for her tenacity in setting those up, right? So, she's working on the second and third rounds, but, you know, finally they'll be getting in there. So, I'd like to move approval of HHS Resolution 5821, recommendation for approval of first agreement modification of first regulatory land use restriction agreement with DuPage Housing Solutions, DuPage Pads, project number 6-05 and CD 6-24A, reducing the portability from, period from 40 years down to 15 years.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine, uh, HHS items, uh, 12B, C, and D.
Uh, Member Diciani was leaving, so I'm perfectly fine, but I would think you should adopt a little bit of space there, please. There you go, there you go. Uh, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on HHS P 10-21, recommendation for approval, contract purchase order to McKesson Medical Surgical Minnesota Supply, prime supplier for general medical surgical supplies and, uh, general care center supplies, January 15th, 2021 to January 14th, 2025, contract total not to exceed $1,190,000. Uh, I move on HHS P 11-21, contract purchase order to Music Speats LLC for music therapy for the care center, January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, not to exceed $48,124 per bid renewal. And I move on change order HHS P 17A-20, amendment to resolution HHS P 17-20, to advocate care centers for rental of, uh, medical equipment category, racing for the care center, um, January 26th, 2020 to January 25th, 2021, to extend our previous agreement of February 28th, 2021, not to exceed $121,000.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second on these items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okay, Pachowski's not here, so that's the end of that roll call. Uh, Member Renahan, does that conclude your report? I think it does on HHS, correct?
Yes, it does.
A fine report. Um, if I may, just point of order, uh, Mr. Diciani has permission to have a guest here on the floor with us, uh, with no objection. I said it was perfectly fine. I don't have a problem with it, but perhaps you would introduce your guest if you'd be kind enough. There he is.
Sorry. Uh, Rich Nemick is a Naperville resident here in DuPage County. He's a former retired police officer. Um, one thing I was going to mention, uh, later in the, in our...
Okay, yeah.
So, dear friend.
So, just as a courtesy, we do this on rare occasion. Typically, it's a member of a family or a spouse or a child or something like that, but I think in this special case with the law enforcement man, with a good smile on his face under that mask, right? So, we're happy to have you.
My senior page for today, so thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Uh, moving right along, uh, to the next order of business, judicial public safety. Member Julie Renahan.
I move approval of, uh, JPS 59-21 Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriations, DuPage County Health Department, for the Illinois Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant in the amount of $244,980.
Second, Desart.
Okay, uh, there's been a motion and a second by Member Desart. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSP 21, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Northeast DuPage Youth and Family Services to provide services to use who are at risk of domestic violence and trauma for probation and court services. This is from the period February 1st, 2021 to January 31st, 2022, not to exceed $47,700.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Member Diciani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Ren- Renahan of a fine report. On to the order of Public Works, Member Mary Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, as a committee update, I want to, I've met with staff several times, and I want to thank them for their warm welcome. Uh, Public Works has plenty of good works ahead this year, so we will keep you all informed. And today, I would like to entertain a motion to approve PWP 0012-21, an agreement between the County of DuPage, Illinois, and Deutschler Engineering Corporation for on-call as needed professional engineering services for energy and demand response for multiple county facilities for Public Works, stormwater management, and division of transportation for a total contract amount not to exceed $90,000.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
And LaPlant.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Ozog. A, a fine report, very efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, on to the order of technology. Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would move on TEP 0254A-20, Resolution to Amendment, TEP 0254-20, um, issued to Johnson Controls US Holdings LLC to install a clean fire suppressant system for the IT data center. It's an increase of 4.25% for a total of $163,625.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. And Schworzy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Clerk, and thank you, Member Selman. On to the order of transportation. Uh, in Member Don Pachowski's place, we have, who is the Vice Chair?
I am Mr. Chairman.
Forgive me, I'm sorry, Member Ozog. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let's see. I move to enter, I entertain I moved to enter, I entertain a motion to approve, um, an amendment ET-R-0044A-19, an amendment to resolution DTR-004419, letter of agreement between the county of DuPage and Commonwealth Edison for improvement, improvements along CH 23 Gary Avenue, multi-use trail, from Army Trail Road to the Great Western Trail, section 11, 00237-11-BT, to increase the estimated county cost in the amount of $87,000, resulting $87,851.32, resulting in an amended estimated county cost of $215,889.46, an increase of 68.61%.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Chowsky, Rennahan, Rutledge, Sworzy, Selman. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Raduski.
Aye.
And LaPlant.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, member Ozog. Um, that concludes our committee reports, uh, all fine reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Old Business." Old Business. Is anyone seeking recognition on the order of old business? I see member Rutledge in front of me. I see member Covert on the screen here, followed by member Chavez.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to let all of the board members know that the, uh, money that we procured for the townships to purchase diapers is bearing fruit at this point, so if you have families in need, please direct them to your township for, uh, diapers, formula wipes, and so on. Thank you. Again, thank you all for that.
Very nice, member Rutledge. Member Covert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Um, I wanted to, uh, comment on the public comments that we've received. Um, I, I definitely sympathize and, and empathize, uh, with the public comments on, uh, reopening schools and having the choice to whether to go back to school or not. Um, regarding those comments, I did have a question and kind of an idea, but I don't know if it's possible if someone could answer that question for me. Um, I was thinking whether we can have a, if the CARES funding that we do have, um, is it possible to allocate the CARES funding to the municipalities for the specific purpose of, um, helping those schools that are gradually reopening or have hybrid models, um, for PPE equipment, sanitization, uh, temperature equipment, you know, a- anything that they need? Because I know the state helps the schools, but I believe there's not a whole lot of assistance there, and, you know, I think the school board and, and the, the parents, they don't know where to turn to, so they're going to the county health department, they're coming to us, they're going to the state, they're going to the school board. So I'm just trying to think of anything that we can do to help those schools that are gradually reopening, to see if the CARES funding can go, um, to the municipalities to distribute specifically, uh, for COVID purposes to schools. I don't know who could answer that question. Maybe, maybe Cheryl or Nick.
Uh, Nick is here, and he's gonna step up.
Everybody hear me okay? So, the, uh, actually, very good idea, and it's my understanding, and I, I will follow up further, um, the latest round of stimulus the federal government approved, although it didn't give us any more money, I think it included, uh, school districts in that for direct allocation. Um, as we know, our 161 million has been fully allocated to date, but, uh, let me, I, you know, Cheryl and, and our team, Mary Catherine, we can talk and, and get more information to you on that concept, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, we have, uh, member Chavez, followed by member Diciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to address public comment and to see if we could clarify a few things. Um, first of all, as a mom of two 13-year-olds, I am one of those parents who is most interested in getting our kids back to school, so I wanted to clarify that in case my comments from last, um, two weeks ago wasn't clear. I think we all know that that's the best environment for our school, my biggest, or for our kids, is to be in school, but my biggest concern was that we weren't influencing, um, other elected officials or our health department, um, but rather guiding them to make the best decisions for our community as a whole. And to that point, I'm wondering if Karen might be able to address, it seems the biggest concern in public comment is whether or not our current guidelines are in alignment with December, January versus the summertime guidelines. And I was wondering if Karen might be able to address when they were updated and how current those are, so that we can all just make sure everyone's comfortable that we're working with current numbers.
Okay, so I'm gonna take the liberty of calling on member, uh, Tornatori, who's seeking recognition, and as you know, he also serves as chairman on the Board of Health. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, after public comment, I did, uh, speak with Karen or texted her, uh, the Board of Health, uh, is consistent with CDC guidelines, which was last updated in September of 2020. So, we are current with CDC guidelines, and that was the last update. So the suggestion that we are not consistent with CDC guidelines or have not updated with them is an incorrect statement.
Anything further, member Chavez? Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, member Diciani.
We can't hear him if he's speaking, sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, District 205 is back in session, uh, uh, and children are allowed either to go in person or electively, they can stay home and, and go to school via Zoom. Uh, but it is nice, uh, having a, a seventeen-year-old, uh, who does have special needs and has an IEP, uh, needs, needs accommodations, uh, those are tough things to try to get, uh, over a, a Zoom class, and, uh, I know she's super excited to be back in, uh, so Elmhurst is definitely, uh, stepping up and, uh, trying to get these kids back in as soon as possible. And, uh, um, I, I know, uh, members Zay and I, back, uh, back in September, uh, we're all over the health department about trying to, you know, uh, not necessarily make the decision for our schools, uh, because the, the CDC was saying the best place was to be back in school, and, uh, I know while it was our schools', uh, uh, option to, uh, either, you know, take the county's guidance or not, I, I still think we are typically the gold standard and, and always the gold standard, so schools typically are gonna try to follow what we say. So i- it's, it's very difficult, um, even though they have the discretion, uh, sometimes it's difficult to go against, uh, what your county tells you, uh, you should be doing. So I, I am glad, glad that they're back in, and, uh, you know, we've had our private schools, I, I've got many of my nieces and nephews at, uh, Visitation in Elmhurst, and they've been back in all along, and they haven't had any issues because they, they follow best practices, and, uh, it's, it's worked out well. So looking forward to see our public schools back in, uh, as many of us parents, uh, I'm sure all agree, is, is, uh, getting these kids back in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know you've all heard this before, but I was on the Glenbard High School Board for eight years, and I would just like to reiterate, while I respect our public participation people today, um, this really is a local school board election, or excuse me, school board decision to make deciding when the schools are opening, and I can assure you that these school board members, I've spoken to some of my pre, my older co, my previous colleagues, they're doing the best they can to make the most, uh, responsible decisions that they can, based again on our health department, the CDC rules, um, there really hasn't been much change since September, when you think about the escalation in the rates, and we need to do the best thing that is safest for both the children and their, and the staff, the teachers who are working there. And I believe that they are doing that, and schools are opening. They are opening in hybrid situations, they're opening in various, um, they now have saliva testing, they're doing the best that they can, and I just wanna remind everyone that our local public schools is one of the bastions of local government, and that we need to work together, especially during a time of crisis like this. Thank you.
Thank you, member Ozog. Uh, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Anyone? Anyone? We move to the next order of business entitled "New Business." New Business. We have member DeSart.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to, um, as of yesterday, we hit, uh, DuPage County, um, a heartbreaking number of six, sixty-six thousand four hundred fourteen, um, COVID illnesses, and within the last week, we surpassed 1,000 deaths. So I would just like to request a moment of silence to honor those we've lost to this horrible virus.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's, uh, uh, let's observe a moment of silence. I, I, it's a good suggestion. Thank you, member DeSart. Okay, thank you. I saw member Zay seeking recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we get, uh, usually weekly or monthly or whatever, uh, reports from our auditor. We just, uh, got a report last week, which concerned me, about the county clerk's office, and said that they had violated the county's procurement ordinance, and what struck me more is what they had purchased. Uh, they had purchased two, uh, cars. One was a Ford Utility Interceptor, and next was a Ford F-650 Super Duty truck. Uh, I know many members on this board had questions of purchasing vehicles because of the pandemic and our limited funds, but now we turn around and we see that the clerk went out and bought over $113,000 worth of vehicles, when our sheriff bought no new cars for this year, and our transportation bought, our transportation department bought no new cars. So I see this in his memo, that this was a violation, and that these have to be, uh, brought before the county board. The other one that bothers me is that for this Ford F-650 truck, they did not go through the state procurement process, just went to Joe Cotton, and from talking with our staff, paid an additional $16,338 for this vehicle. So, um, you know, I would like to get an explanation from the clerk's office, A, why we needed these vehicles and these specific u- vehicles. I don't know why the election division would need a Ford Utility Interceptor, which is a police car, and why they would need a Super Duty truck, which I could see a, a van or something that they could transport things in, but a pickup truck, which I don't, don't think will fit in our garage, that's how big this vehicle is. If we can get an explanation from the clerk at the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, member Zay. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of new business? New Business. Anyone? Anyone? Oh, member Hart.
We can't hear either.
Something wrong with his microphone, Joe?
I actually was pressing the wrong button, you'd think I would've learned after three years. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to recognize the words that you said at the onset of your chairman's remarks and echo them completely. Uh, what we saw last Wednesday was obviously very disappointing, and I think it's apropos, that we recognize Martin Luther King Day, uh, today, uh, and find the connections between what Dr. King preached, uh, throughout his years of life, uh, and, and how we can act and, and take this, uh, as a learning lesson. Um, I think it's more important than ever that we recommit ourselves to the ideas of unity, primarily, uh, equal justice and, uh, equality. Um, and it's obviously clear that within our nation right now, we're in desperate need of leaders that are willing to take action on, on those, uh, on those concepts. You know, I'm very proud that this board and you, Mr. Chairman, and member Covert in particular last year, uh, made a lot of strides on diversity inclusion. We made a lot of great progress, um, instituted a lot of new initiatives, uh, and it's really heartening to see our partnership flourish with the NAACP and with the College of DuPage. Um, and I wanted to, you know, rise today just to talk a little bit about some opportunities that I know we identified last year, uh, through the diversity study, Mr. Chairman, that you commissioned, uh, and really recommit this board to following up and, uh, implementing them in this coming year. You know, the first idea that I, I know we raised last year was the establishment of a full-time diversity and inclusion manager or director position that will identify and, uh, and build a, an inclusion plan for the county of DuPage and implement that plan. Um, I think it's definitely time that we, uh, look at that and find a way to get that budget in the next fiscal year, um, so I'm looking forward to working with our colleagues on that front. Um, additionally, you know, it, it's one thing to foster a culture of inclusion, which is incredibly important, uh, but equity and opportunity are equally important, um, and I think that's why, even though this may take a little bit longer of a runway and a lot more work and stakeholder engagement, um, I do think it's time that we start looking at a, uh, minority and women-owned business enterprise program for our county of DuPage when it comes to our procurement activities. So, um, those are two aspects that I think we should recommit ourselves to this year. Uh, I'd love to work with my fellow board members to get those moving, um, and, Mr. Chairman, defer to you on, on, you know, which committees are best to, uh, to take those up, but, um, you know, I think the time is now, and if there's ever a moment where we can raise the occasion and champion those issues like we've done last year, I think this is it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, member Hart. Uh, well said, well said, and I think you've outlined exactly what we, uh, will do. Uh, and we've got a, a group of committed folks here, um, across the political spectrum, and, um, uh, we are going to be the example of how to get these things done and do it the right way. So thank you very much for your leadership. Uh, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of new business? New Business. Mr. Diciani?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, talking about, uh, diversity inclusion, I think, uh, uh, walking the walk as our sheriff has done in appointing Eddie Moore as our undersheriff, first African-American undersheriff in our county, I think is, is an example of, of just that. Um, we not only have Martin Luther King's birthday today, we also have law enforcement day on the road.
No.
And while, while it's been a challenge nationally with some of the bigger cities issues that we don't necessarily follow in this county, because we, we believe in CIT, we believe in, uh, you know, de-escalation, we believe in, in, in quality policing, you know, I can't think of, you know, uh, I was thinking of why I'm so passionate about law enforcement, and I, this gentleman to my right, um, partnering up with a, a, an old, an old police, an older police officer that, uh, I had an issue when I was four years old or almost lost my life, and I was bleeding out of my mouth and, uh, shooting like three feet, and, and this gentleman walked in and literally, uh, you know, grabbed, grabbed the artery that was open in my mouth and, and stopped it from bleeding, and I always remember, his name was John Holden, he's no longer with us, but he was a, you know, thirty, forty-year police officer that saved my life. Um, then, you know, families in the, in the business and friends, et cetera, and you're a mayor, and, and you, you realize how important these people are to you, um, but, uh, Law Enforcement Day was on the ninth, and I think we need to really, uh, celebrate, uh, the men and women, uh, that wear the uniform and do the job right in this county, uh, we have plenty, and that's, that's a great thing. So, uh, with that, uh, I thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh, member Diciani. Well said, yes. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of new business? Who is seeking? You pointed up.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, member Ozog, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to express my distress, distress over one of our public comments today regarding the elections, uh, inferring that our voting machines made by Dominion are not accurate, that Democrats have now come onto the board. I am frightened, disturbed, and horrified by what has happened in our country in the past five days, six days. I know all of you share that, but hearing a comment like this, I've been elected three times over the last ten years in this county, and I believe I was elected in a fair and well-conducted situation all three times, and I think it's important that all of us here who have been elected support that idea. And I'm going to share with you my comment that I made on social media after the events of last Wednesday night. It's been an interesting and sometimes quite difficult two years, my first two years on this board, and I hope going forward that the local Republican Party members and elected officials, some of whom I serve with on this board, will consider that their commercials, videos, and social media posts filled with, often filled with false claims and name-calling, made against my fellow board members and myself for the two years since I was elected, are part of the poison in our public life seen last Wednesday in Washington, DC. We all need to do better, but we also need to express to those we know, to anyone that we're able to influence, the actual truth, and our elections, especially in DuPage County, are free and fair. Thank you.
Okay, uh, member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, earlier, uh, member DeSart talked about the COVID numbers that are in our county, and, uh, my comments are in no way to take away from the suffering that those families are undergoing with this pandemic, but I understand that our flags have been at half-mast all these months to honor those deaths and, and the struggles that those families are going through, but I also understand that it was ordered to be at half-mast for the DC police officer that lost his life last Wednesday, and because our flags are continually at half-mast, I believe that that waters down the recognition that, uh, what a terrible place we were at in our country for that, uh, police officer, officer to lose his life, and so I would like to see our flags back up at full mast, so that when these kind of things happen, they get the proper, uh, respect from that, uh, gesture that, that they should. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great remark, and I have thought myself about that whole policy, and maybe we ought to consider, uh, a, a little task force here of the board members to engage and discuss and collaborate about a policy for, um, for, uh, the positioning of our flag. Uh, I know that there, there are directions that come from the state, I know that there are recommendations from federal government, um, but I do know that there's a fair amount of latitude, and, uh, you're exactly right, uh, that flag has been at half-mast every day, I, I mean, I can't recall when it was last, uh, raised to the top of the pole. And so while we wanna honor, uh, all of the folks that have passed tragically, um, the whole, uh, symbolic value of drawing attention to some, you know, u- unique and special and remarkable, uh, i- incident is really, you're right, it's been diminished, and so I would love it, and if you wanna go ahead and just talk among your colleagues and see if there's some folks that would like to participate, uh, in a friendly conversation, um, with the, some of the folks that have been, uh, in charge or have been, uh, making these decisions, I, I would be delighted, uh, to have a conversation about that. Member Eckhoff is jumping up to his microphone. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I brought that issue up, I agree with, uh, was Rutledge, 110%, brought that issue up back, uh, in June.
You did, I remember that.
And said that I thought that it was bad that we have become a nation of petro-mortars because we have a governor that wants to put the flag at half-mast, and not that, and I know our prior governor, uh, did that quite a bit too, so it's not a political or party thing. But, uh, there's a state rep in Springfield who's made a proposal to do that. I wrote an editorial that got published in the Tribune, the Daily Herald won't publish it, uh, but it is ridiculous that we have this, uh, flag at half-mast for so long, and it's been there since, I think, March or April. So I would join with, uh, member Rutledge, if, uh, you wanna create some type of committee that we can make a res, uh, recommendation, pass a resolution, send it down to the governor and to our, uh, state reps and state senators in Springfield, I think it's high time that we, uh, got off the petro-mortaring bandwagon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, collaborative effort, little friendly communication, sharing our thoughts and concerns is what I would have in mind, I think that's your approach as well. Anyone else? Member Selman seeking recognition, followed by member DeSart.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, with full respect to member Rutledge and member Eckhoff, um, I, I would be very much ingr- interested in a conversation about how we are properly, um, memorializing those who have lost their lives. I just would like to remind this body, if we look at the twenty most deadly days in the United States of our entire history, all except three are days of death from COVID. September 11th is not our highest death number anymore, unfortunately, and that was one day that shaped the next twenty-plus years. Um, perhaps we could think of a, once a week, sort of, maybe we can ask the churches in the area to ring their bell, something like that, but I do wanna keep the focus on, we've become numb to how much death there is and how many people are losing their lives. I think we're numb to the fact that there are hospital systems, close and far from us in this country, that are telling their paramedics, if they can't be saved, leave them at home, we're not able to help them anymore, and I think it's so important we stay focused on that, because it did not have to be this way, and there is so much room for improvement over the next year. Um, so full, again, fully in respect of member Rutledge and member Eckhoff, I think their comments are well-founded, um, I just wanna make sure we keep focused on, there is still a massive, large loss of life, and for us to maybe downplay that, I think could be a dereliction of our responsibility to the public. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, member DeSart?